This is just, uh, we're either it's. Our budget. Goals. Policies and objectives. Okay, so tonight I wanted to just focus on the general fund later. In the coming months, we'll talk about the utilities and the capital projects and that sort of thing. So this is just an overview of the general fund revenues by category. So you can see our biggest category thirty five percent is the retail sales tax. Twenty one percent would be property tax. And then we get down the utility taxes, B and O taxes. Intergovernmental, which is the four percent that kind of varies. Some of it is state shared revenues like liquor profits that are shared with us, some criminal justice funding. Others would be grants and our grants fluctuate greatly. Sometimes we have several grants. Sometimes we hardly have any grants. So that's just how it fluctuates. So for the property tax, um, we're proposing not to take the one percent increase, but it will increase because there are new property tax revenues from the new construction that comes on to the assessment rolls. Um, and actually every year there's always a little bit of a refund or re-levy or correction from the assessor's office. So we do not have the, um, final numbers from the assessors to really, but I'm ballparking that it's going to be about one point six nine four million.
So that section there just said budget and then it says, that's what they both say twenty twenty four?
Right. So we budgeted, we estimated last year would, or in twenty twenty two, when we put this budget together, we estimated that it'd be about one point six, six, five million. And looking at preliminary information from the assessor's office, it looks like it'll be closer to one point six nine four million. But that's not a final number yet. So. And again, I just want to reiterate that's without taking the one percent increases. So sales and B and O tax, our B and O tax is pretty, um, level, it is slightly increases, but not much. But as you can see, those bars are fluctuating and what's causing that fluctuation? You'll see like in twenty twenty two, we had a large bump. Twenty twenty three, we're getting a bump. Those are big capital projects within the community that we are receiving sales tax on. So the school district, um, they did a big remodel. We received a bump from that. We are doing the W R F. We're going to get a bump from that. Those are one-time monies. We do not want to budget operations with that one-time money. So we are going to make a recommendation on what to do with those little bumps. Um, when we get down in the slides. But overall, those are, um, sales and B and O tax monies. So general fund salary benefits, these are the categories, um, that drag a lot of the cost. We are seeing some increases, um, from what we budgeted in twenty twenty four to what we think it's going to be. Again, we don't have final numbers, but we do know that, um, healthcare is going up a little bit. Um, we've got some colas that are in the contracts that we're going to be putting in there. Um, and just some changing of positions and things like that. We're not, um, so we are not proposing any additional positions at this time, but do you recall that we did budget for one police officer in twenty twenty four? That we have already done, started the hiring process this year for. So we are front loading that one. So we always talk about, um, the need to keep operating revenues in line with operating expenditures. We don't want our daily operations and expenditures to exceed our operating revenues because then to make up that deficit, we're going to have to use reserves. And so in looking at the preliminary numbers, I think we're pretty on par with, um, our operating revenues being somewhat equal to operating expenditures. So, um, you know, that's great. That's a good job by council because that means that, you know, we are not relying on reserves to balance our budget. Um, and I think a lot of cities are in that position this year and it's, there's some difficult talks going around, but I think, um, we're looking like we're in pretty good shape there. So we do have some increases that we need to adjust the general fund budget. Facility repair and maintenance increases, um, due to aging facilities. We need to add twenty five thousand to the budget. We've had a lot of HVAC repairs. We've had a lot of roof repairs and those are just things that we need to plan a little bit more money, set aside a little bit more money for those because they do pop up. Um, utility costs for city facilities, um, utility costs are up across the board and same with our facilities and we need to plan for that. And we are bringing on the dog park and so that's going to require annual maintenance of that dog park. So we're putting ten thousand into the budget for that annual maintenance. Um, we have a park membership fee that we haven't budgeted in the past and Cody is going to tell us that parks stands for.
Uh, recreation arts, um, coalition, I believe. So then the ones who do the grant, they find grants for us. They, we council signed them on board in twenty twenty one. Um, and this will be our third year of going, of working with them.
I just want to make, make sure it's reiterated that it's seventy five hundred dollars what we paid to them. And we are getting hundreds of thousands of dollars in grants from the work that they do. Is that correct?
Correct. Every year we've gotten something. The biggest one this year is the R C O trail line grant. Um, they created a presentation. They pretty much did all the labor and even donated five thousand dollars to the, right, of the rebuilding the bridge for the ferry line trail. So yes, every year they've gotten us more than we paid. Okay, Bart.
Thank you.
Um, does the maintenance for the dog park include the lighting? The utilities?
No, those, the lighting utilities, we're going to install with money from the dog parks. We're going to put those three lighting that saved us money. So we're putting in those solar lights instead of putting in.
Oh, okay, perfect. Thanks.
And I have another question. On the facility repair, you talked about like roof, leaky roofs and all that. Is twenty five thousand enough?
I mean. So we already budgeted.
Okay.
Twenty five thousand, so the total will be fifty thousand.
Thank you. Okay, that makes more sense.
Twenty five thousand's not.
No, I was gonna say.
Not doing it. Um, fuel costs have been increasing and especially in the police department, um, we need to add eleven thousand more to their fuel budget. And then, um, I talked about just a few minutes ago about, um, those one-time revenues that we're seeing. Um, so in twenty twenty three, we've seen the bump in the sales tax, but we've also received bumps in building permitting fees, right? Because we have all these, this construction going on, we're getting more than anticipated in those, um, permit fees. So what we're recommending is that we take a chunk of that one-time money and move it to fund three oh two, which is our capital projects fund for the general government and earmark that for a replacement or improvement of city facilities. So, and these are just ideas. One idea we, we talk about quite a bit is the need for new council chambers. Um, something that will grow with the city because we've kind of outgrown that room. Um, another one would be city hall renovation, whether this building could could somehow be reconfigured inside to accommodate a bigger council chamber. Um, we need additional office space, whether that's new space or reconfiguring, um, general facility upgrades and maintenance. Um, a lot of that is the HVAC systems. Uh, we've had problems in this building. Um, we've had some repairs across the street. So and then just planning and building our facilities to keep up with expected growth. So nothing, um, you know, no plans or anything. Those are just ideas, but I really think it would be prudent of the city to take that one-time money we've received from increased sales tax and the building permitting fees, move that out of the general fund so it doesn't get whittled away and earmark it for those future facility growths that we would need. So.
And once it's earmarked, it's designated to that project?
So it wouldn't be designated to a specific project because we don't have one defined right now, but it would, if we put it in, um, like fund three oh two and we and council says this is reserved for future facilities, then it would take council action to say, okay, now we have a plan of what we want to do and we want to use those funds earmarked towards that project.
Okay. So it's in, it's in a, its own.
Reserve.
Reserve.
Yeah. So looking at year in twenty twenty four, this is how the general fund reserves are looking. Um, I anticipate we'll have about one point eight seven six million in operating and maintenance reserves. That's about twenty percent. Um, and that's good. G F O A, Government Finance Officers Association recommends around fifteen percent. So we're a little higher than that. Um, the seven hundred sixty five thousand, one eighty four, that is, um, what is left after the property purchase of two twenty five? I believe the property over there that we're purchasing. Um, so that's that money that was transferred from the L I D that we paid off and the surplus came to the general fund and we designate, designated that as general government property management money. So that's what would be left at the end of twenty twenty four. And then the three hundred and twenty thousand, that's undesignedated reserves in the general fund. Um, that's just the balance that would be left over. So. So going forward, this is kind of what we have planned. October tenth, um, at the regular council meeting, we talk, like to talk about the utility funds, just to give you kind of a rundown like we did for the general fund on the utility funds. We'll try and give you, um, as updates as much as possible on all the capital projects we have going on, whether they're going to be completed this year or if we're going to have to carry them over into the next year. Um, and then we'll have our first of two public hearings on the property tax. And then October twenty fourth, um, we'll have more budget discussion if needed. We'll have the second hearing on the property tax. And then November fourteenth, I don't, I just put it in there. We, if we need to discuss budget, we can. Um, November twenty eighth, we will want to adopt the property tax ordinance and we will want to adopt the, um, twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four mid biennial budget amendment.
Stephanie, could you clarify what the property tax ordinance does?
So it sets the property tax collections for the next year. So that's information that we are getting from, um, Thurston County assessors. They tell us what the assessed value is and then we calculate the property tax and then by law, we have to have two public hearings on that and then we have to pass it by ordinance. If we do not pass it by ordinance, we will not get any property tax in the next year. So.
Thank you, Stephanie. And that's not the one percent either.
No, that's not the one.
We could, our council could decide to choose it or choose to raise it by one percent. Um, we're recommending that.
Correct.
So those enough.
That is what I had for the general fund. Any questions?
Yes.
Could you, uh, nail off the slide to, that reached myself a little about the, uh, the other council members that might want it so that I can look at it, review it and know more questions from it? Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Oh, sorry.
The police view on, you said that it's, is it based on, just clarification, is it based on the fuel prices that have increased or the increase of use of fuel? Is it both?
I, I believe it's absolutely the prices.
Yeah, most of it is going to be the fluctuation of the price.
So most fit, but not all of it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Rob would probably be able to clarify a little better, but I would imagine that the majority of it is just a big price to plan for a couple of months. And we do get a better price than what the average consumer would pay at a gas station, maybe contracted in the school districts, then we get there.
Did you see the ballpark of seventy five days that's cheaper per gallon? So I mean, there is that saving, but at the end of the day, it's our, well, it's a risk. What gas?
That's just compensates for the increase anyway, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, roundabout discussion.
That's not you.
Yep.
Chairs.
I have the oldest computer in the world. It has used in my system. I don't have any, see my plug. Thanks. Okay. Joe, now, you send the presentation, maybe Kathy and she could. I can share my screen, but I don't know how we'll post it up on there. I'll show the people at home, but I'll show you guys. Let me sit here. It's two years old. Stephanie, if I send you these things, can I steal your? Do you send there? Okay, or Kathy, I'll send it to you. Kathy, do you have H M I program?
Um, no, I do not.
Oh, wow. Guys, you guys.
Huh? Turn back on, okay. I'll send it to you. I couldn't log into there, but then you were gonna go share.
About infrastructure money we were just talking about.
What was I gonna say? Or just get, you could even get just the, the adapter cables so that you could use it.
With that increase, we will do that. We'll get you a ten dollar cable.
Yeah. Wow.
As you're doing it, you had a want to talk a little bit on.
I'm gonna send these two emails. So, um, we're gonna be talking about, I have two things. I have the roundabout and the H C P. I'll talk about the roundabout first test on the first on the agenda.
Where's this roundabout at?
Um, so this is a Bald Hills five oh seven roundabout. Um, I just sent it to.
One of the three planned roundabouts?
Yeah, so there's, I'll just go over it and I'll briefly show you. So the proposal, what I'm gonna show you is just the map of what the concept is of the drawing. So we have a con, we don't have a contract yet. We've sent out an R F Q, um, a question for qualifications because you can't do an R F P for engineering. You have to do an R F Q. Um, so the difference between R F Q and R F P, R F P is request for proposal. You ask for pricing, you take the lowest bidder. Um, in R F Q, you just ask for qualifications and you rate somebody based on their qualifications and you pick someone, which is a lot better way to do it because then you don't just get the lowest qualified. Um, parametrics was the most qualified based on the criteria we had. So parametrics will be designing the roundabout, um, which is convenient because they also designed multiple roundabouts for the bypass. So they've already in this area, they're already doing it and their plan is also to bid on the other two when they come up, the Thurston County and Pierce County roundabouts.
We've done work with parameters before in the past.
Correct. They're doing our W R F right now. Um, we had, so the, the three, we had three companies apply. Um, the two ones that were leading were S C J, which you, we worked with in the past, in the trail and a couple of other things. They are the lead on the bypass. Um, they're not the main person. There's also co-people. That's where parametrics comes in. Parametrics is the lead on, will be the lead on this for this roundabout. Um, okay.
Okay. Thank you, Stephanie. Perfect. I'll get a new computer ASAP. Okay, here we go. These were defined here in the last biennial or this latest legislative session. Uh, Representative Barkis helped identify and spell this out for us.
Okay, we got it. So this one doesn't have a, um, I'll share screen here so we can type the put home PC if I'm finding out. So there you go. Okay, so there's three concepts. I'm gonna show you the first. So we were, um, third, now Thurston County, uh, T R P C along with Waz dot had concepts already drawn up for these. So there's three concepts you're gonna see. Um, the first concept, this is a single lane roundabout. Um, this is the least impactful to the neighboring people. There's very little right-of-way acquisition, as you can see. Um, you lose a little bit here. You lose a little bit down here. Not a big impact. Um, when we model this, it'll show us which one's the best. So I'm gonna show you all three. We haven't modeled yet because we don't have anyone under contract yet. We just started negotiations with that firm. Um, so this could be an option. The problems I see with this is it's not going to be able to handle the amount of traffic. And so a single lane is probably not going to be adequate. So model two is a double lane roundabout. So you can kind of see it on here.
Takes up more real estate.
Yeah, it takes up more real estate. So the good news is nothing actually like disappears, but you do lose like the signage here. There is some signage here on this coffee stand would have to, uh, it's entry and exit would have to be adjusted a little bit. And you lose some signage here with the double lane roundabout. The nice thing is this hasn't developed yet. So even though there's some lost real estate here, there's nothing impacted because there's nothing there. So this is the double roundabout proposal and I'll show you kind of what our concept is for everything. This is what our concept is.
Can you move it over a little bit into the undeveloped area?
You could. And not change anybody else?
You might be able to. Um, the thought, the thought process behind it is these are just, these are basic concepts that was dot gave us. This is not how the final design will be, right? We might get to the design process and they go, hey, this doesn't work at all. Let's just turn this back into five corners, drop it through here again, um, and not even do this roundabout. These are just in, because we haven't even started design, right? They haven't done traffic models or anything yet for this. This is just the recommended designs. This was our thought process behind the Morris Road Bald Hills five oh seven, which gives you the roundabout at five oh seven in Bald Hills and then the roundabout at Bald Hills and Morris, which is a little compact roundabout here. Um, the nice thing about this one is it takes up no real estate really. It's kind of in that same area. You lose a little bit of entry and exit ways, but with a roundabout, it makes it way better. And this also provides you, if you're coming, because I know people are talking about this, if you're coming this way, you go into the roundabout, you can come back around and you can turn right into the gas station. Yeah, it's a great concept. So, um, this was the concept we're kind of leaning towards, but again, once we go through the traffic models, we start the design work, that will lead us to what actually works, right? Though again, we won't just build this and go, hey, this is what I want. There's gonna be traffic models. There's gonna be a lot of data that goes into what roundabout works best. This may not even be what it finally comes out. It, like I said, it could turn back into five corners and there may not even be a roundabout here. There may not even be an intersection here anymore. Who knows? It all depends on what the traffic modeling says. Um, questions about this, I will walk you through kind of the funding and how that works because that's another big concern. Um, and that's later on this little slideshow, but I want to see if you have any questions about this.
Brian, sorry. I think he got it first.
And run some roundabouts. Can we please, please make sure that in the requirements that commercial trucks, fifty-three foot sleeper cab, that even the extra, extra, uh, long things like that, that they are actually able to get through these without jumping the curve, smashing it and causing more damage than necessary.
Yeah, and our, so good point, our modeling will show that. So this is, these compact roundabouts, usually they're meant to be driven over by those large trucks. They're designed to allow a large truck to just drive over it instead of having to go around it. This two-lane one will be more adequate where the biggest thing is knowing that if you're a driver in those roundabouts, you see a semi going, it's going down the middle. There's a reason it's going down the middle. Don't try to sneak around it. Um, that's just good roundabout behavior, but yes, we will make sure the modeling puts in firetrumps and other ones. So.
Amanda.
Who's responsible for the cost associated with moving signage and moving drive-throughs?
Good question. I will get to that in just a second with the cost part. So any other questions about just the design kind of overlooking and then I'll get to the cost in just a second.
I don't think it has to do with cost. But as the impact on businesses, you mentioned the, uh, the coffee stand there and we go go into the sidewalks a little bit and expand it. Um, we've been having unsuccessful, we've been very unsuccessful with the, uh, where that five oh seven icon is now with getting retail space in there. And I believe it was, and maybe it's just rumored, um, due to the traffic wall. So do you think this will solve it or make it better?
Yeah, I don't know if it'll solve it, but it'll a hundred percent improve the desirability of days. Because the, I can, I can tell you because it went to almost full application. Um, there was a development that came in here and was dot wanted them to build a roundabout at Safeway where Safeway came out and they just didn't have the money to do that. So they pulled out. Um, this could improve the traffic because what'll happen is you'll put a median down this lane here. Because people won't make left turns anymore. They'll go straight through the roundabout, come around and turn right. Um, so roundabouts prevent left turns. Left turns are almost always where your conflicts come from.
Got it.
Yeah. So an also long back question about people occupying that, that space for businesses or whatnot. Uh, a lot of that has to happen because of the, uh, traffic impact analysis.
Yep.
So with the roundabout in place prior to, is that going to require a T I A? If somebody wants to open up a business or buy property?
Yeah, so anytime any business comes in and that's part of the, the things we require is certain business, all businesses almost have to do a T I A, traffic impact analysis, saying what their, their business is going to do to the area around it. And if it needs improvements, if it detrimental, if they fail in intersection. So we have several businesses try to go into this lot and this intersection failed and they had to make improvements here. They weren't willing to do that. So no business is opened. Um, so that's why you see areas where there may be not a business for years and years is because if it's not gophers, it's because they can't do, they can't do the traffic improvements or the traffic improvements are too costly to, to do. So we do these, these things, kind of things, improve, help businesses open and then it takes the burden off of those businesses to try to build a traffic improvement. So.
Do you think that that might increase the potential sale?
A hundred percent.
Okay, of, of that vacant property.
These may, do make these very desire, I would say, as a.
Do we know what they're zoned at?
They're both zone commercial, C one. Yeah, so this, both these lots are commercial zones.
If you have, yeah, so this is the roundabout that D O T is wanting us to do, but we're in charge of it. This is the only one.
Yeah, this is the only one. So there's three in total. Um, this one, the one at Vale Road and, um, five oh seven and then one at seven oh two and five oh seven, right in front of Kella McKenna Elementary. Um, they're trying, Pierce County is gonna do that one. Um, Thurston County is gonna do the Vale Road. There's still questions about Pierce County, Thurston County, they'll do them and we're gonna do this. The reason why this was done in great, on the mayor and Barkis is that was dot is not the quickest when it comes to projects. Um, as you may know, but we have been very quick when it comes to doing things. So they put it in our plate and I mean, we're already farther along than was dot and the three months we've had this. So. Yeah, we have a concept.
Pretty quick about the five, ten.
Yeah. Ten more years. Um, let me show you, let me go through the cost just really quick on this. Um, so you can see this is a form that makes zero sense to you, which is okay. Um, the number you need to look at is this here. This is how much they're allocating for us, one point three million. Um, you can see there's seven hundred and sixty-four thousand and twenty-three, twenty-five and then five hundred and fifty-five thousand and twenty-five and twenty-seven. This is for engineering, not building, right? So we have to engineer it. There's ten million more or nine-ish million more. You can see over here, the full price, ten million. So there's ten, there's ten million total to build the entire thing with engineering.
Is this money that we have to come up with?
No, this is money they're giving us and I'll show you the letter in just a second. So they're giving the city this money. It was, I said, here's the money, do the project. And we said, great, we'll do it.
Um, this usually doesn't happen either.
No, it never happens. This is a, a rare occurrence, but it's, the cool thing is if this works out, this could be a new precedent set for, hey, yeah, with, uh, the bypass. You guys want to just do it? We'll give you that, not the bypass, but things like that where they might give city money to do projects because they don't have time or effort or willingness to do them. And that's a huge thing if we can start, if we can be one of those pilots of, I mean, we're literally the first city to do it. So, but I know, that I know of. Yes.
Good job then.
That's how much has been allocated. What happens if there's price overruns due to, uh, material costs and labor costs going up?
So you're, so correcting that, uh, let me scroll down one more here, I think. Um, yeah, um, so if there is more, so you can see here for just preliminary engine, there's much, if, if the price goes over, it'll be up to the state and Washington Department of Transportation to get more money for us. We are not going to be on the hook for any of it. So we are not, like, we, we did not move forward with this until I had this contract in hand. So this in hand gives us the one point three million for engineering. Our engineering contract will be one point three five mil, you know, six hundred and twenty-nine thousand. That's what our engineering contract will be. So one, the engine, we know the engineering will not go over that. Two, we won't start the construction phase until they give me the same letter with that amount and we know from the engineering firm and we get bids. You know, and go, hey, the bid was eight point five million. That's how much we need to give us eight point five million. And if they give us the contract, great, we'll move on from there. If it comes up where there's more, we'll make sure that they have to go get the money and secure it for us. But our goal is to not move forward until we have these kinds of things in place. So we're not on the hook for anything.
We would work with Andrew Barkis to, or our representative to, um, get initial funding.
Yes.
Very important question. Does that, does that money, um, account for and have enough in the bucket for like trees or anything in the middle of the thing?
I hate to bring up my word.
So, um, I, I, they won't pay for anything that is not a requirement. So they will pay for like trees required. They will pay for landscaping, but they won't pay for us to put like a statue in the middle of it.
A waterfall.
Yeah, so anything that's beyond the, in what is required, they won't pay for. So that'll be on, what? Yeah, lights will be required because you require street lighting, uh, tree scones, you know, landscaping will require tree planter strips, sidewalks, flashing beacons, those are all be required. Those are things they will pay for. They won't pay for us if we go, hey, let's put a statue of, you know, um, Joseph Richardson in the middle, just raising his arms up. They won't pay for that because that's extra. So, if they won't, they, we have, we would have to figure that out and we can work with them and go, hey, we're gonna do this. It's gonna come out of our bucket, but that's something we would have to do. They won't pay for it.
So I keep hearing the name Barkis with the, 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 he have a lot to, our representative got this moving. So I keep hearing the name Bargas, would the, 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 he have a lot to, our representative got this moving?
Yes, he was, I would say the primary driver for us in this, um, along with the mayor. I mean, all the mayors came into a meeting, the city county ministers and they, he goes, hey, do you guys want to do this? And everyone was on board and mayor came to us and go, hey, you guys willing? We go, heck, yes, we are. Like, if we can get it faster, let's do it.
Funded by the DOT.
Funded by Washington State Department of Transportation.
So in your contract there.
Yeah.
So what happens? And I, I'm trying to read the whole thing, but so let's say, yes, they give you the next contract and it says, you know. Ten million, let's just make it easy, ten million dollars. So they start working, they get about two thirds of the way through and all of a sudden, oh, oh crap, right? And we need another two million, just going to say that. Is there going to be a timeframe in there? Because I, do you know what I'm saying? So when you go to the state, you say, hey, you need to give us two more million dollars because you said you would. Is there going to be a time constraint for them? Um, do you understand what I'm?
Yeah, I do understand what you're saying.
We don't just get.
No, I, I understand what you're saying. So normally, yes, there is, there, they have to go during legislative session. What we do automatically is we build in a, we do, and we do this on all the projects, build in a twenty percent contingency.
Okay.
So that contingency will be, so that our contract will be ten million. There would be two million extra, so it'd be twelve million dollars allocated. So even though our contract's ten million. We have two million to do change orders if we need to. If we go above that twenty percent contingency, someone really messed up. Um, we have never, even all of our change orders we've done have never been over that twenty percent contingency. So that's kind of how we do it. But if there was an emergency, they kept going, yeah, they would have to go back to legislative session. I know they can do emergency sessions. But, but they can, they would go back to try to request.
So they already have budgeted some kind of a twenty percent change order?
There's always a contingency built in. Yeah, so the contingency is already built in. When we get to the engineer estimate. We're going to give that to them and make sure their contract has that estimate with the contingency built in.
Okay, alright. Brian, sorry.
Second sentence, all costs exceeding those shown in this agreement are sole responsibility of your agency. What, um? How, how do we know that we have made sure that we have not, that we aren't looking at any excessive costs?
So this, this one specifically for the engineering, our contract definitely exceed that for engineering. This is engineering, this is.
Uh, it's just, I, I understand for the engineering, I just want to make sure that the. What's that excess? What, what could cause that excess that all of a sudden? We're on the hook.
It's probably not engineering, it's probably the actual construction. Yeah, engineering normally doesn't change when you get a base, they'd like all of our engineering unless we've gone and changed designs later. That's when you, if you go to initial design and go, here's what we're going to build. And then you come back and they start designing and you go, actually, let's build this. Then that's when engineering costs go up. We, not that that's ever happened.
I wasn't going to say nothing. I wasn't going to say nothing.
But this, but this, we know what we're into, right? We know it's a roundabout. We know what we're building. There's. It's going to be a one or two lane roundabout. They have to do the traffic study to figure out what it is. They, that's part of their budget, figure out what it is and then you're going to design whichever one it is.
As I said, I'm just, I'm wondering what's going to all of a sudden cause us to get on the hook? That we all of a sudden are going, uh.
Yeah, this, there won't be anything engineering wise, it's the construction, that's for that contingency built in. Cause you always, and no matter what, this is, and I'm sure anyone that's in any kind of the business where you do some kind of remodeling or working on things. You lift stuff up and you're like, wow, I did not expect that down there, right? But then that's always what happens. You dig it up and go, wow, there's a pipe here from nineteen forty that's not on any map. I didn't know it was here. We need to move that pipe. Um, so we always budget and plan that that's going to happen and that it just does. It's the world of construction, less than an empty place that no one's ever built on.
Okay, actually.
All have question on the beautification that Harry mentioned. I think it's important that there's some sort of input, input on the beauty of it. You mentioned that landscaping is rolled in there also for the cost, but. Um, what does that input look like from us or from the public?
So the roundabouts themselves, there's a very set guidelines DOT has. So if you've seen the like roundabout coming into town, they have like three options you can do. You can do straight rocks. You can do a couple of little tricky things or you can do just nothing. Um, so we could pick between those three options, but if we're going to beautify above that, that is something. We would need to bring to probably Public Services Committee. I don't know, Arts Commission would have a plan that. And it would be money we have to find out of our budget to do that beautification.
Okay, so you're just talking dirt and rocks and?
Yeah, it would look probably very similar to the roundabout coming into town right now.
If this is a priority for city council, if they want to make sure it's whatever. Absolutely, they have the opportunity during, you have the opportunity during the budget process, say, we'll allocate some funding towards, uh.
Okay.
When we keep our streets clean and our stores clean, crime has a less chance of showing up.
The one thing to reminder is this is DOT, when we're done with this, we turn it over to them. Yeah, we have to work with them to do.
Yeah.
This roundabout here, if it happens, is our roundabout.
Right.
We can do a lot more with this without getting any approval than we could do with this.
We put that statue of Joseph in. Speaking of the beautification, infrastructure of the, um. Roundabout. Purple line. Is, will that be something that while everything's all dug up, we make sure that even if it's going to be what we, what is referred to as a dark one? Because it's nowhere, nothing's connected to it yet, and please make sure that that gets done so that we are able to keep it watered. Or the five-ten loop, uh, they kind of failed to make sure there was a purple line in there. So that as it gets closer to our water supply, we're able to help maintain a wood landscape.
Yeah, we, we will sleeve for future things. It doesn't have to just be purple line, but we will sleeve for future conduits. So we will have stuff in there for that. There is no purple line, like you said, near this area. But it is a good habit to just prep yourself if you need to run future lines. So we will have sleeves under for future growth of things. Yes.
You have more?
Not sweat. That's it, just this one. I know I have another presentation later, but it's, I, I think I have her computer still.
Okay. Third option you said, that was.
Those are the three.
Those are the three.
Yeah, so you have this option, which is our combined one. You have this double lane option without any improvements here. And then you have. The single lane option. This is the least likely of all of them, I believe, because I don't think there'll be enough. Again, these could completely change if they do a traffic setting and go, hey, you know what? It doesn't make sense to have this road here. Let's redo this road. And we have the right of way still. For this Morris Road that used to be if you were here back in the day. Um, so we have the right of way and it could look completely different. You could have a five-corner roundabout. Roundabout, which would totally, it's been done in other places, so. It just depends on when we start doing the, as we know, but we'll see more.
Can I ask, as far as action from the council, what are you expecting and how soon?
We will bring a contract before you or with parametrics to do this design work. That engineering will, I believe we're bringing it later this month. So there will be an engineering contract with parametrics for you, knowing that it'll be state money. There will be a budget amendment to. Show the revenue coming in and also show the expenditure going out. Um, for this and that will be in the capital that will present, that, uh, this dice will present to you next week. Miss Nannovich will present to you next week.
Anything else on the roundabout? Alright. Event rental fee discussion. That's mustard, yeah, Mr. Todd. Mr. Todd, isn't that you?
Okay, no fancy computer, no screen. Old school, old school. And I know I emailed this out last week, so. So what this is, is the, uh, the first page and a half is what we presented at the last study session. Uh, just a highlight overview would be good.
I think so.
You guys have the, you guys have the old one, I see you have that one earlier, that, that the old one, there's one of these. Okay, so it just again, this is our, kind of our second reading of kind of the highlights of the event review process or the event, uh, Rambel process. Um, and then the second page is the event fee, uh, recommendations and kind of highlights just some of the. Proposed changes from the committee. Our committee consisted of the police chief, public services director, VNO tax analyst. Uh, communications recreation coordinator, myself, am I missing anybody? I don't think so. Okay, that was it. So. In going through, obviously, the, um, events of twenty twenty-three and the rental, uh, of twenty twenty-three. And kind of trying to get a, a better grasp on, uh, what we can do as a city to kind of clean it up, I guess, and make it a little bit more. Uh, professional and, and how we go through our process. And again, we highlighted some of those changes at the last city council or study session, but some of the big ones will be. All the required, uh, events that are, that are under the RCW, uh. Or I'm sorry, the YO municipal code will go through council for approval. And those are the big events, the big impacts for the city. And then we'll have a review, uh, committee that will consist of the same group that I just mentioned. And the, the, the intent behind that group is to, uh, look at the impacts to those individual departments on those, on those events. Um, and just to have the discussion, so for an example, the fire department. Um, maybe there's events that the fire department needs to be aware of ahead of time, based on maybe the size of the event, the event, what's going on at the event. That event review committee would then reach out to the fire department and said, hey, we want you to come and look at this event. What are the impacts to your fire department? Is there anything we can do to offset that? So. It just gives us a, a more thorough look at the event itself. And sometimes we have the historical, uh, perspective of an event that's been around for a while, so we know what we're going to get. And then what we've seen in the last couple of years are new events that we don't really know what those impacts are yet. We, we, we can guess, we have an idea, but after they've been here a year or two, we have a better idea of what those impacts might be. And so a lot of these changes, uh, minus the rental fee came from looking at different, um. Event fee or, or event review facilities across the state. We looked at about twenty to twenty-five, uh, different cities and how they handled their, uh, rental process, um, at their facilities. And so what we tried to do was kind of pick and choose the best that we could out of each one. And then this went all to our attorney, uh, all the language was reviewed by our attorney. In particular, all the indemnification language, you may have seen that we added. It may be a little overkill, but, uh, we went with that. The, the attorney was good with all that language. And so, um, it just, it just cleans it up. It just, you know, when looking at all these other, uh, policies and how they did business. Um, it became obvious that we needed to kind of upgrade our, our process a little bit. So that's kind of what we went over at the last study session. The thing we didn't get a chance to really discuss was the event fees. And so just as a highlight, I mean, really the, the biggest significant change would be, uh, separating the park rental from the community center. So, um, right now, when you have an event, you get the park, you get the community center. Um, obviously you get the parking lot to the community center. And one of the ideas behind that last year, when we were talking about these event fees is. If you rent the park, nobody's going to want to rent the community center, right? So we said, well, let's just give them the community center along with the, along with the event rental. So the group, when we were discussing that, we believed that that's not really the case, that somebody could rent the park, just the park and not use the community center. And so. And then what it turned into is it's actually cheaper to have an event where you rent the park and the community center. Than it is for you as a private person just to rent the community center, uh, because of that. So. Now, I'm not saying that that was abused in any way, but it's definitely out there for, for, um, for the taking of, of folks that may want to. Uh, again, say I'm going to have an event. And they would pay less than what they would normally pay just to use the community center for their, for their event. So. This would, this, the five hundred dollars for just the park is consistent with what we charge at Cochran. Um, it's five hundred dollars a day to rent Cochran Park. That's why we threw the five hundred out there. Again, this is just, you know, proposals, this is, you know, this is just some recommendations we had come up with as a group. Um.
Councils more than all.
Yeah, absolutely. It's just, it's just kind of a number we put out there just to show the consistency with Cochran Park. And then the last piece we added, obviously in the last week, that wasn't on last time was the, uh, stage. So the discussion came up with the stage. Okay, what do we do with the stage? Do we rent it? Is it just, anybody can use it? How is that going to work? So, uh, Cody and I and Lynn. Had kind of a discussion and again, this proposal is just an idea we had, so. The idea that anyone can go into the park and get up on the stage and use it if you wanted to. Right? You bring your own stuff and you get up there and you sing a song, right? And we can't stop any from doing that and nor would we want to. The idea that you could rent it would be that you could hook up into our equipment, so you'd use our electrical and use our equipment that we have. And then of course you could reserve it. So the hundred dollars for half a day was thrown out there as a way that you could specifically reserve the stage for an event for yourself. So, you know, if you wanted to have a kindergarten graduation. And you wanted to make sure that you have that stage for your kindergartners to walk across that stage and a few chairs out front for the parents. You could guarantee with a hundred dollars for half a day, you could guarantee and then plug into our stuff. Um, otherwise you could just first come, first served, get up on the stage, but you have to bring your own stuff. You don't plug into ours. So that was the whole idea. We came with the hundred dollar reservation is that you're using our equipment and it guarantees you use of that stage. So it makes sense. And again, this is just an idea we threw out as far as, you know, what, what do we do with the stage that it's there? Now, if you rent the park, the idea is, is that if you rent the park for five hundred dollars, you get the stage. That's part of the deal. And then of course, the mayor and I were talking earlier, I think it was at our management team, right? We were talking about this morning is. Who would just rent the stage and not the park? And so, you know, why wouldn't you just rent the park and five hundred dollars, you get the whole, you know, the park and the stage? Well, the idea was, again, using the graduation theory, is that you don't need the whole park. You know, you just maybe need twenty chairs in front of the stage. That's all you want. So we don't, you know, we didn't think that making somebody pay five hundred dollars to just use the stage would probably be the, the. You know, the best way to go, but anyway, it's just our ideas. It's just, that's kind of what we threw out there. And then the only other, uh, kind of on the free, the fee structure, uh, change, um. We clarified the rental, the kitchen is a daily rate, not an hourly rate. That was just, we need to make that adjustment in our fee structure. That's the same where we're charging, it's just the language is different. Um. Add private rental under the nonprofit category. Currently, we don't have that under there, but that is what we're charging private rentals is the nonprofit rate. And then the barricades, um, available to available rental equipment. So Cody had barricades that we've obtained, uh, quite a bit of them. Um, that are, they look good, they work great. Uh, so the ability to, uh, rent those barricades for your events, uh, we wanted to add that to there as an option. Because they are good-looking barricades and they work well, so. That was really the only piece. And then the other, the other piece, and I know we talked about it briefly, but I want to talk about the road closure and how that came up. So we've always done the road closures in various, um, lengths. Sometimes it's a little bit bigger, sometimes it's, it, it expands. And so one of the things we said is that at some point we got to define what roads will be closed for an event. Um, because we didn't want to base it on event by event. Well, how much road do you want? And then somebody else would say, well, I want this block too. And it's like, at some point, you gotta, you gotta have a. Limit on how many roads you're going to close just because of the impacts to the, the people that live around there, um, for that. So the idea was we'd have a set road closure. After going through that discussion and then talking with, um, the chamber a little bit about the whole road closure pieces is. Some of these events are getting big and they're very popular. And we don't want to deter these popular events from, from, you know, coming to the, to the park and obviously it's a big draw for, for our citizens. And so we added the language that would, on a case-by-case basis, allow for additional closures to be done. So it's not just a given that we want a road closure and we want, you know, two block radius. It would be, this is the road closure, and if you want to ask for an exception to extend that, it would be done on a case-by-case basis, uh. You know, I, I'll use the barbecue rally as a great example, right? That's the biggest event that comes in here. Um, we could probably shut down two city blocks and fill it up. I mean realistically, right? So we don't want to deter that event from being what it is. We just want to have some sort of. Some sort of control. And what, what I mean by example, so I'll use the police department. So their, their secured access is just down this road to the left. And so. Under most road closures, we close that access. So if you close that on a, you know, once in a while, once every year, twice a year, it's probably not the end of the world. But if you start doing that every weekend where we're closing the secure access into the Sally Port. It's going to become an issue. And so that's where we decided we probably need to limit at least the, the normal, uh, roads we close. And then just limit the exceptions, you know, to maybe one or twice a year, based on, you know, historical attendance or things like that.
Do you want to briefly say what a Sally Port is or what, what they use it for in importance?
Yeah, so the, the secure Sally Port is, uh, where you bring in prisoners. So if someone's in custody. You go into the Sally Port, it's got a secured gate. Um. If someone was to bust out of the car inside the Sally Port, they got to climb over a fence to get out. Um, so if you're bringing in someone in custody, if you're bringing in a DUI subject, for example, you pull into the Sally Port. You, it's a secured area. You take them out, you walk them directly into the back of the, uh, police building into another security area. So the idea of, of restricting the access to that Sally Port repeatedly. Is just, we wanted to try to get a grasp on it while we were reviewing this, uh, to, to limit the amount of time we would limit that road closure. So. What I got on there, questions?
Uh, Brian.
Um, one of the concerns, uh, when this was discussed before was the, uh, deposit. And the comment was made that the deposit would be, um, if there's a historical. Working with the event organizer that, oh, they're always good and everything else like that, no deposit. But then for somebody that I knew, there would be a deposit. Uh, I was thinking about that, reflecting on it, and that I think we need to have the deposit no matter what. And you can always give the deposit back and always refund it based upon whatever was.
Do we not make a deposit on certain things? We did deposits. We did deposits.
I know, but there, there was the statement that, and I remember the chamber had concerns of, hey, this is too much of a deposit. And that it wasn't refundable, and there was others that, you know.
So the issue at the last meeting with the chamber, was their deposit getting back to them after the barbecue rally? So it's my understanding that. We sent it back, right? Yeah, we sent the deposit back.
Okay, but we're, we're, it's, the standard doesn't matter if it is.
Right, no, you, you pay the deposit no matter what.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure of that, cuz I remember the part of the discussion was. That that was still up in the air and I thought about it and I just wanted to point out that, no, everybody's treating the same, doesn't matter, because you never know. That historical unit, that all of a sudden has a new management, may not be as quality.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, so I was looking at section five with the licensing, sale of food beverages, merchandise, and admission. And again, so there's that added language to be consistent with the Y N C nine point six eight point zero, you know, I feel like I'm gonna start. Explain the category three rate for use of city facilities and clarify the licensing requirements for all coordinators, vendors, and performers. Any event that allowed vendors or performers to be present and operate without the appropriate license would be denied future event approvals. And must have valid license prior to approval. And we had talked, I think the last time in the study session or whatever it was to, that there was this gonna be some kind of like a. Well, you know what I mean?
Yeah, one time deal.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, yep, and that is on. Uh, let's see, what did we add there? We added the. Oh, there we go, very back page at the top, adding in the option of event vendors to attain a temporary. Event authorization in place of like a state license.
Okay, so that will.
Yeah, that, that would be the goal. We have, we would have to bring that to councils and ordinance to change that. But before we did that, we just wanted to see if that was something the council would support.
Would that license be active for the whole year, just that event?
So it's my understanding that it's a temporary permit, like on a three-day, you get it on a weekend-to-weekend type basis.
Twenty-five dollars a month.
I believe, yeah. And I mean, there may be different options for longer, uh, uh, longer period of time.
Okay.
But in, in my discussions with Sarah, it sounds like it's more of a three-day event, specific event permit.
And does that still require them to have a license with the state or can they be just, I'm a new guy, I wanna sell some stuff?
That's the idea. Yeah, the idea would be for those, those folks that wanna come to an event one time a year.
Yeah.
Or, you know, you can apply it to the farmer's market, for example, you know. All of a sudden, they wanna come that, that weekend cuz they have some stuff they'd like to try to sell and try to see how it works. They didn't, they don't have all the license to do so. This would give them the option to come in, get this license. And again, the, the cost, I just put twenty-five dollars in as an example. I don't know if it's ten, five, twenty. But they come in, they get this license, we give them a, a number where they could show it, that they had it, and that would allow them to operate that weekend. There's restrictions to it as far as like how much you make. You know, you can only profit so much, I believe, and I don't know the number right offhand, but there is a limit to how much you can make. But it's in the thousands, so it's not like a hundred bucks.
But then they're still paying taxes to the city on that profit.
It'll reach a certain threshold, I believe.
Yeah, well, if they go over a certain threshold, they have to have an actual state license. They can't.
Oh, yeah, yeah, of course.
So this is only for that, uh, for the, for the smaller vendor option. So there's some other cities that do it locally, and so that's where we thought it, it could. It could solve a lot of the issues we ran into this year. And, and not only that, but it saves us a ton of time, staff time. In trying to make sure everybody has these licenses, just to give them another option to come in and get something to operate. Because, again, when we look at these events and these great, successful events, these vendors. They're, they're growing rapidly. I mean, people wanna be a part of it, which is awesome, right, for everybody. It's just that our current ordinance on the books that it requires is requiring the state license of the city license. And so that's hard for your one-time folks to come out and get all that, and, and some of them are going, you know what, forget it, we, we just, we're not gonna come to Yom. We'll wait to go to Tenayl, or we'll go to Lacey and do business at their functions, and we don't wanna create an environment like that. So this could give us an option, uh, in addition to what we currently have on the books.
And we got to that thing, um, what's the point of it? What's it do?
Which, what's that now?
What's it do? Why, why should I get this temporary license? Do you do a background check? Do you, I mean, what, what's the point of it?
Well, it, it's a place of having a, right now, our ordinance requires you, if you do business in the city, to have a state license and a city license. So what I'm saying is, this allows you to operate temporarily in the city of Yom under this permit. And again, it would have to be an ordinance that you guys would have to adopt. But it allows this to, to do business without having to go through the process of obtaining these other licenses. So that, that's the whole goal of that, is to give them an option. So what we heard repeatedly this year as we're trying to verify vendors. Is they don't have licenses, they don't wanna get licenses, they just would rather not come to Yom at all.
And they pull out.
And they just don't come. So this is something that we found that other, that other cities do to allow them to operate on a. Once-a-year basis or twice a year, they can come and do business. Now, the fee, again, I, whether it's just for staff time to process that, I don't know. And again, that rate might even be completely different once we do all the research and bring it forward. That's just the number I threw out. Well, right now, if you get a city license, if you get a city license, there is no cost to it. And so, so for example, if our, if our folks are. If we're spending hour, we spent hours and hours to try to verify all these license and permits. And I've heard them do it through my office to their office repeatedly during the summer, trying to verify all this. Countless, countless hours to try to verify these permits. And at the end of the day, it's a free permit for the city. So there's, there's, the city gets nothing from that, but we've spent so much staff time to try to verify this because our ordinance requires that. So this gives it a whole different option and solution where. Uh, if people don't wanna go through that, and they can do it right up to the day up. I mean, if the event's Saturday, they can come in Friday.
What do they have to do though? Like, what, what are the questions?
I don't even know. Yeah, I don't even know exactly.
Because I would think if nothing else, it would be just a vetting, a, a light vetting process that somebody isn't gonna come in and sell something.
So you would get a number. So let's say, so if you have a booth set up, we would give you like a, a, a permit that you would have for your booth. So if we had to verify, somebody was going around verifying who had a license, they would have something that says, I have a temporary license to do business in the city of Yom. Same if you have a state license or a city license, you could deploy that, but this is just another way to do business on a short-term basis.
Well, brings up my question, if we have, since the city license is zero, why do we even have a city license if you have a state license?
Why?
Yeah, why do you need a city endorsement if you already have a state?
Well, I think anyone has to do business in the city of Yom. You have to have a city license, you do, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
If it doesn't copy any.
Yeah, I don't think every city does.
Well, so we, we imposed a D N O tax, so it has a city license, and they need to be filing their D N O reports.
Sounds like you find out who's always being a.
Right, it's those people that have those licenses. So if we know a business doesn't have a license, then they're not reporting D N O, then we can notify them that, hey. Cars to the ordinance, you're required to have business license, which is all processed through partner revenue on behalf of.
And a state license, fifty dollars.
Yep.
If it is a twenty-five dollar fee and do it twice, you might as well just get your state license, because it's only fifty bucks.
Yeah.
Actually.
I have a couple of questions. Thank you for already answering the vetting process. And that's still a big question mark. Um, under the rental of the city park for an event, it mentions that it does not include. The community center or parking lot. Is that park, there's multiple parking lots. Is that specific to, or will you outline exactly which parking lot, who is one of the ones?
Yeah, so what we thought we would show is, is like a map, a colored map that shows you what you get for that rental. And so, and again, I think it was a discussion last year, is that if you have an event in the park. They're probably gonna take over all the parking lots, and who would wanna rent the community center if you can't park in front of the community center? So a-again, the, the map would show you kind of what you get. If your event says, we need the, we need the parking lot, cuz we're gonna put booths in the parking lot or something like that, well, then that would trigger you to rent the community center. So if you're gonna, now, obviously, you can't stop people coming and parking and going to your event. It, it, obviously, it is what it is. But if you're going to designate that parking lot as part of your event, that you need that space, then you need to rent the community center. Just because it's obvious you're gonna take that space, yeah.
To continue on parking, I'm reminiscing past summer events. That parking lot was also used, is that considered part of the street closure or is that a separate parking lot?
Which parking lot?
Right there.
Oh, this one?
Yeah.
This particular one right here. So the, yeah, so in the, in the proposed, uh, road closure, it wouldn't extend to there. So that would have to be an exception to the road closure. So typically, that would not be shut down and used, blocked off for an event because of the parking.
What do you refer to that lot as? Is it a city?
Uh, yeah, it is a city lot. We own that lot, so, yeah, I, water tower. Maybe, we'll go with that.
Okay, to continue on the road closure, um, a road closure will require a basic right-of-way permit. As established in a resolution number six twenty-eight, is that, is there a cost to that permit currently?
Yeah, it's one twenty-five or two fifty, right? Is it?
Depends on the, what, one twenty-five is usual.
One twenty-five is the usual, and that's, I believe, them putting up the barriers and whatnot for two fifty is that we shut it down, is that correct? Use our equipment. That right?
Per road.
You had a question?
For the total, that's the total closure that we implement. So we wouldn't, we wouldn't try, if we extended, for example, if we extended a road, we wouldn't charge a separate permit on that exception.
Terry had her.
Just a side note question, is everything in the kitchen working perfectly?
Um, last time we were in there, uh, it worked.
The microwave and everything. There was one event we were at, and you were the one that said this, we need some care.
Yeah, we did. I know, uh, our, we had our custodian go through the whole thing, top to bottom, did a fantastic job. Um, the idea going into twenty twenty-three as well is that we're gonna stock it with, um. All the utensils and, and have a checkout list, so we can verify this is what you're getting. Because obviously, we started with a lot more than what's there. And so, you know, if you're going to use it, you're like, oh, we, we don't have a knife, or we don't have a spatula anymore. So the idea is, is we're gonna outfit it with a set, a standard set of what you get, which will, will be everything. But, and then that way, when you check off or we go back and make sure you have, we still have those utensils, like three, four, three spoons.
Yeah, right.
Um, it's back to the discussion of the temporary permit. My understanding of reason why you need to have a permit to operate is because that gives us the capability of. Collecting the tax, sales tax, whatever, that that's kind of like your tax ID code. And when we're looking at just this one-time one, it could, it's for those hobbyists or, you know. Mister Smith down the street who does love to do carvings, all of a sudden goes, oh, hey, I can, let me go see by trying to sell some of my carvings. I'll set up a little booth, here's twenty-five dollars, and I now. Up to a, and what is the limit before we start going, hey, you need to pay sales tax now?
I think it's two thousand dollars in profits for that event. So I believe anything over that requires a different permit.
But, but as I say, that, that's what that's.
It's gonna make it easier for someone.
Yeah, there is, there is a, there is a dollar amount.
It's, it's for the hobbyist, not for P T L that says.
It's for you to bring your cookies that you make at home and try to push it.
Right, okay. That's what, I will make sure that, it's not for the established business that's going.
No.
That, no.
Yes. Yeah, um, this is a, I don't know, maybe it's a loaded question, but with the, with the fees of everything and, and also with, um. The application for LTAC and, and, and organizations qualifying for that. And that LTAC money can be used for these fees as well, but then understanding that LTAC money is a city tax. Or what, what is that? Where, where is that? Is that a, where is that? It's a lodging tax? So it's not city money?
Okay.
Right? It's not city money. Okay, so we got this, this LTAC money that we can apply for, or anybody can apply for, for an event. And if we know what the prices are for rental.
Yeah.
We can include that in our application to the LTAC, and then from the LTAC, whatever we get. Uh, sponsored for through that and granted, then we can go ahead and pay to the city those fees.
Yeah, so in, in, in addition to that.
It applies.
Yeah, it applies. So we've never done this, you, you've never done it before, but in, in going through the LTAC process, if you have an event that requires, let's say, public works personnel. Right, right? Whatever reason, you're gonna need two public works personnel to make sure your event is pulled off, and it's an LTAC-approved event.
Right.
You can actually put in for the cost of that employees from public works to offset that impact. So there's, we've never done it through LTAC, but that is allowable. Um, so I, I, I will use, I'll use parade days, even though it's not an LTAC event. But if you, let's say parade days was an LTAC event, and we know it's gonna take twelve officers to pull off a parade for parade days. Right? So you're looking at the ballpark at three to four thousand dollars, probably in overtime to pull off that parade. If that was an LTAC-funded event, you could request reimbursement to offset the impacts of those staff for that event. So there's ways to use LTAC funding as well, because some of the language that we added in here. Are, is the ability for a department to say. Man, listen, you, you, you were here last year, you destroyed the park, you didn't have garbage, you didn't have garbage service, things were, things were left poorly. We'll approve your event to come back, but we're gonna assign a public works employee to your event at your cost.
And I only say that because the concern is, is that, you know, you, 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 that the LTAC is city. Funds, you know, that's the concern is like, oh, they're just putting this out there.
Yes, no.
Go ahead and come back around. So as long as.
We're on the committee.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, city's on the committee, but that, I think that's, that's the look that people see, and then that's the kind of the persona that everybody's like. Are they just putting this LTAC money out there and said, yeah, yeah, put it in here, put it back in the pocket? You see what I'm saying? And so that's, so there needs to be some, uh, some education across the board on how LTAC money is, is utilized, where it comes from, who's responsible for it. Because everybody just wants to take a look at the city and say, well, the city's just doing this, and, and they're just paying themselves from the LTAC money. So, and I'm just trying to say that to be transparent, because that's, some people think this way.
Yeah, we just have one vote on there, is, is myself as the chair, representative. Um, but there's, it's mainly for the, the hotels that uses it, that collects the tax as well.
Are they required to do that through city or what?
If the state requires.
State, so it's a state requirement. So now we get some separation from the city seat. So that's what we gotta keep in mind, is like, this is a state-required thing that, that the hotel has to.
How the process is.
I was gonna say, when you're, when you're talking about LTAC funds, it's very, uh, regulated by R C W on what you can spend it on. So, I mean, R C W dictates what, how we do it.
Who's on the committee?
Who's on the committee and what it can be spent on. So it's not, just, it's not a city.
Yes, we're not saying, yeah.
It's very specific what it can be used for.
It's very good. And again, I'm just saying that out loud in the study session, because there's a lot of folks that don't understand how this process works. And they look at the city of Yom as, oh, they're just feeding themselves. And, and that's, that's the, so what we have to do is get rid of this trend, you know, we gotta have some transparency so people think this.
These aren't our events usually, they were. I mean, I think we had one event that we reported last year, we're not. We have a new city.
Eighteenth of discovery, yes, approved, or less than what was requested, and the other request was denied.
Yeah, so.
The vast majority isn't going to the city, and we just got a tiny sliver of it. We applied for it just like any other.
Absolutely. Well, that's good. That puts a lot of, that solves a lot of mystery, uh, because when I hear all this, this language, I'm like, okay, this is just really some liability. To keep everybody protected, so nobody gets in trouble. And so thank you for the explanation on that. I wanted to make sure that was clear.
Ash, one more follow-up, and I'm curious. In number five, it says any event that allows vendors or performers to be present and operate without the appropriate license would be denied future event approval. Will that be, will that denial come formally through the event review committee?
Yeah, and any, any denied, uh, application would go through council. So if the, if the event review committee denied an application for an event. That denial would go through city council for final say in that deny.
And what if they didn't deny? Does it still come to city council as a final say?
Yeah, it, it's got, whatever, yeah, the events that are covered under the Yom Municipal Code that are required to come to council will all come to council. Which is basically most of your large events that are in the park. All of those are gonna come to council, whether they're denied, even if we, even if our review committee approves them, and we're not really approving the event. We're just looking at the impacts of the event. That way, when they come to you as a council, you know that we as a staff has already, have already considered. What these impacts may be to kind of help you decide. If you're gonna approve events, whether it's through the consent agenda, however you decide to do it on your, on your agendas. We just want that process to be in place, so it's very upfront, transparent, the discussions have been had. And so, for example, if, if, let's say the barbecue rally submits an application. And, and the event, event review committee looks at it and goes, ah, we have some questions on this, this, and this. Well, we would call them up and say, hey, can you help us understand how you're gonna do this piece, right? And if they can come in and go, yeah, we got a plan for that. Okay, awesome. And then we, we send it up to the council and you get the final say. So just makes the whole process from getting the application to the approval extremely transparent. And just multiple discussions could have been had before it ever gets approved. Rather than an event getting approved and then having multiple questions to follow, we're trying to go the other way, ask the questions first.
That's gonna be interesting.
You mentioned something that also, and it reminded me, it wasn't the deposit, it was a statement of. You trashed a place, so this year we're going to put a public service person on point, and they're gonna, and you're gonna be required to pay for it. That's what I want to make sure that we're equal across the board.
Yeah.
And I don't know how we can go about it. Is there a way that we can go about where if. You know, having to say, okay, one public works person isn't necessarily there, they're on call. They're getting paid for being on call, but until, until they get, they have to actually do it. You know, it's a difference in cost. I I don't know how it works with, with the public, because I know that I've been in, in private sector where you're the on-call person. You are getting paid a small fee, eh, just because you have to be by the phone. And that still is charged to one and all, everybody. And it's that's, it's a smaller fee, but the moment that that person gets called in, boom, it now gets charged. Because again, you may say, hey, this uh event uh has been going on, barbecue rallies have been going on great, they've always been cleaning up after themselves. Everything five years down the line, but in year six, because new leadership, somebody drops the ball.
Yeah.
They didn't have any public works people there, and they got away scot-free with something that somebody who made the mistake of. And is now being punished, although they may have learned their lesson.
Yeah, so the idea is obviously not to punish somebody, uh, it's obviously to maintain our parks, run that to it, to a standard where they're not getting ruined. And the, the whole, the whole goal is to make sure that the events take care of the park themselves. So the idea would be if uh you're running a large event and you just don't have the volunteers to help you. Um, the barbecue rally is a great example, there's tons of folks that help, right? And they do a great job maintaining the park. But if you're an event that you're new and you go, you know what, we just don't have anybody to help us, can you help us?
Okay.
Right, we would go, yeah, we can assign, you know, we'll give you a public works employee for the day. They're at, you know, they can help with the bathrooms, they can help restock, they can help clean, whatever it might be, here's the cost. For that, to have that service. So the ultimate goal is to just have the event coordinators themselves. Get the volunteers needed to maintain the parks and keep everything flowing. Because when you get into like, like what you're talking about, using an on-call person, you get into some union contracts with that, that. You know, if you get called out, it's a three-hour call-out, right? Whether I come in to change the toilet paper for fifteen minutes, you're paying three hours. So. There's just some contract stuff that would go along with that. So the idea would be, if you need a person, we're gonna assign you a person.
Okay.
And that's at your disposal. So that, that's where the, I think the logic came with that.
Okay, a- as I said, I'm just trying to figure out how to find a good balance there.
Yeah.
There's, there's that, there. Okay, thank you.
That one more. This is in regards to environmental effects of the event we're having. Thurston County. Um, offers recycling. For tentacles for events. Is there any way that we can make sure those are supplied? I mean, there's zero at all.
Contract, Lemay, I mean, they probably do the partners for that.
We have those contained.
It's okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
Lemay actually does not want the barbecue rallies to have the recycling, because people recycle, right?
And it's contaminates the whole thing. Yeah, that makes sense.
Allow us to recycle. They do give us, I think. One or two recycle bins for our food industry for their cardboard, but that's it. And literally because people just.
That makes sense, because there's so many problems with the contamination of it all.
We asked for it.
Happy ass, though, actually.
Yeah, for large to small bins, that would be great.
Yeah.
Anything else?
That's a lot, Todd.
So the next thing is, we'll probably bring this to uh probably November council or we'll get it worked out. Uh, the, the only thing that the council would. Need to approve by uh resolution, right? Resolution would be the fee changes. That's the only thing. The whole policy itself on the rental guide and the process. That's just our process. That's not a council, but the thing with the rental thing. And then what we'll start working on is that. What are the options for the alternative temporary uh permit? And what does that look like? We'll get more into that. That would be a separate, that would be a separate reservation. I would assume, or would that be all type? Yeah, that would be a separate. For permitting would be separate than the uh fee structure. If anybody has any questions between now and then, come and see me, shoot me an email, anything.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you, Mr. Stansel.
The HCP.
How's that work? We invest in slap-on technology.
We need to have the blinds shut.
That was too far away to even look at.
We didn't, we didn't, but we're going to.
Oh, we're going to.
They are, they are adorable, actually, and that's the Oregon Vesper Sparrow.
All right, HCP.
Okay, I will be very brief. Um, this is kind of a recap of some of what we talked about at the retreat. We just wanted to make sure that. It was post, put out to the citizens and show you some maps that kind of delineate where stuff is. Um, so I'll be very brief. That is a Yelm pocket gopher, Mazama pocket gopher, and then next to it is an Oregon Vesper sparrow. Yeah, so those are two protected animals um that we're focusing on in our HCP. Uh, though, the good news is they both use the same habitat, so it's not, you don't have to designate different lands for them.
And one's above, one's below.
They live well.
Triple mitigation, triple mitigation.
Absolutely.
Make them condos.
Yeah.
I should be able to go over here and click next slide.
Okay. So the kind of the things we're just gonna cover, just really briefly, is the current Yelm pocket gopher habitat, so where they currently are in Yelm, which you'll see is everywhere. Um, projected thirty-year build-out, so the goal of the HCP is to cover us for thirty years. Our hope and desire is the city is in thirty years, we'll be done, we built out completely, will be the Yelm that we all dream of. And we will be done building, all structures will be built where they need to be built. Conservation strategy is just kind of where we can find land to can serve that we're gonna mitigate to, and I'll show you a map of that, and then I'll take some questions of you. Um, so this is current pocket gopher habitat. So on here, you'll see a bunch of different colors. If you're colorblind like me, it's just one color. Um, but you have red here is one, that's where we know pocket gophers live. We currently know they are living there, or it's really extremely suitable habitat, all the way to this darker green, which is point one five, which is less suitable. The reason I wanna show you this, this is a map of city of Yelm and the complete UGA. So you notice the borders look really nice, they're not like the borders are now. So this is if the entire city was in city limits, um, including UGA. The reason I wanna point this out is you'll notice this is a six forty up here in the corner. And you'll notice this is very light green and dark green, right? Am I right?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Um, so they are very un, very less suitable habitats, and then white is just not suitable at all. So these areas are not good mitigation areas, because they're not suitable habitats. You will notice a lot of our really suitable habitats are right in our corridor. Well, that's not productive either, because we want to build there. So it creates a conundrum where you're trying to. You wanna build, but you're also best habitats to mitigate to are the lands you're gonna build on, because that's where people wanna build. Um, so you see up here. Okay, so you'll see up here in this section, you'll, you have bright red, this is outside city limits, kind of along where the bypass is. Um, that is really good habitat, but it's prime development land too, because it's right outside. So this creates the issue of where are we gonna mitigate to? So I'll show you on the next slide.
The six forty is in the urban growth area?
Yeah, six forty is in the city limits already, already. It already is.
I don't think the county showed it like that.
The six forty?
So what you're saying is, we're, camera is a six forty for mitigation.
No, it is not. I mean, there is some chances, but the, the amount would not equal what we're giving. What US Fish, so we are, we are kind of ruled and controlled by US Fish and Wildlife, right? So we have to make an agreement with them and they have to buy off on it. So if we go, we're gonna mitigate. Um, the gopher to the six forty, they go, well, that's not really good habitat, so you need to mitigate three times as much. Um, then we're gonna go, hey, we'll mitigate these red areas. They go, oh, you can mitigate a lot less, because we know gophers are there, it's way more suitable. So US Fish and Wildlife would not buy off on this. So it's not worth trying to even, we've kind of briefly brought it up, but it's not, it's not gonna fly with them.
What's that land and it's red in the bottom right?
Right, right here?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we're gonna get there.
We're going, we're moving that way.
So these are the kind of the mitigations we have to do and the impacts. So permanent loss, disturbed or fragmented. Um, those are just phrases to remember. They're not anything that's going to, you're gonna have to make any decisions on or do anything. But you will hear those phrases. A permanent loss of habitat is where gophers are gonna lose all their habitat. Disturbed is something where like, maybe someone's putting a park, where it'll be disturbed for a short amount of time, but then theoretically, they can have it, habitat that area again. And then fragmented is when you're like building a road in between two separate habitats. Like was gone. Um, so GMA, this is where we get into some issues. US Fish and Wildlife wants us to mitigate into city limits. Well, part of the GMA, the Growth Management Act, says we wanna develop within city limits. We wanna push. All the development city limits prevent urban sprawl, right? The goal of having cities and counties is counties are more branched out, they're bigger acreage. They're not, there's forest, there's nature, whereas cities are more dense. The idea of a city is to densify and create where the residents will live. And then use county to kind of have that buffers. Okay, let me get, I'm just gonna skip this one, because I'm just reiterating those things we already talked about. This is, this, so here's the big, the big one. This purple line, I think it's purple, the purple line outlining all this area is where our pocket gopher lives. So that may sound confusing, but there are multiple subspecies of pocket gopher. So you, we have the Yelm pocket gopher east is what we have. There is the Yelm pocket gopher west.
It's like five oh seven.
Yeah, I mean, it kind of is, but you see how far this goes, and I'll point out some, like, more ranch areas. This whole entire purple area is where we could theoretically mitigate to. Because those are all the areas where our pocket gopher lives. The purple in here. Is the denser young pocket gopher specifically, like the one we have in our city that we have to mitigate, but. The whole, the whole area is where we can mitigate to. The reason I'm showing you this is there's a lot of land that's green. Or even darker green outside of city limits. That is suited, that is more suitable, like you can even some light green up in here, um, lost my mouse, but you can see near the purple, there's some light green.
Where are your suggestions coming in?
Yeah, so showing you what this is, is that what we can do is we can suggest to mitigate to lands outside city limits that are still within this purple dotted line. The key with that is that way we can densify the city, bring residents to the city, use county land that's already large. And is designed to be that way to mitigate the pockets over it. Specifically, what we're talking about and we're in contact with, I don't wanna spoil too much, we're in contact with different organizations that have large swaths of land. That we can maybe tap into that are already mitigated for other things, it could also be mitigated for gophers. And you look near. I keep losing my mouse, the, right here is where the river runs, and you look, there's some green areas here that are dense and together even some orange. That could be theoretically mitigated to if we have the right partners. So. We have a long way still to go, but we do know kind of where we can, and our, our conversation now with US Fish and Wildlife. And what I'm kind of asking from council is that you're on board with this idea of not trying to mitigate in city limits. And trying to mitigate in county, so we can densify the city. Use the city to build our structures and everything, and then use that mitigation land outside city limits to mitigate the pocket gopher, so. We don't have giant weird areas of prairie land in the middle of the city that make no sense.
None of this makes sense.
I know, in an ideal world. So the, the hope is council's on board with the strategy of us leading to try to mitigate outside city limits.
Which would have a price tag to it. Yes, okay.
They will have a price tag. The whole idea is, um, we don't know how much seed money will be. I know, we know what Tumwater's asking for, they're asking for a lot, but they have a lot more acreage. We know we're somewhere in the two hundred to five hundred acres. Those are our, our numbers is what we're looking at. If we get a more. Set-together area, they may only be two hundred acres. If we get piecemeal areas, it may be five hundred acres, but if you can get one. Giant part of land that's two hundred acres, that might be all we need to mitigate. And so, being aware of what we need to do to do that, and that's kind of the path of pursuing.
But Cody, how does the pocket gopher get to the mitigated land?
So here, here's a, it's not a transplant, so what you normally do is you find a pocket gopher that's existing.
It's not trans.
It's not a transplant, it doesn't work, they've tried it. Um, they just, they die. So what theoretically happens is you find land that has pocket gophers on it, and you put an area around those pocket gophers to. Allow them to expand in that area and live there. We don't, good thing, we don't need this anymore.
Is somebody calling in?
Yeah. Stephanie disconnected from her phone, I saw. So, thank you, Stephanie, appreciate it so much. Um, so. The, the idea is that you mitigate that area, those pocket gophers can flourish, they can expand, they can multiply in that one area, but the other gophers. Won't have habitat anymore, and they will do whatever.
As long as we mitigate the land.
As long as you create an area where gophers can live, that's what they care about.
Even though they're not there yet.
No, there will probably be some gophers there, but not the abundance that you want, but you allow the abundance to happen, because you created an area that they could go.
This was the double mitigation planned area, right, that you spoke about?
Yes, and I, yeah, I don't, we, we are entry-level talks right now, um, with tho- those groups, and we're talking to other business owners, but. Very positive talk so far, um, and we're also working with several groups on the trail. Um, and we'll, we'll bring in that to you guys in the next, another council meeting, but that, that is, those talks have led to even better talks with. This habitat mitigation, because we're working them with the trail already. So it's just, it's been really great all around. I think we're gonna have a very positive outcome that most cities can't do, because they don't have this option.
Very good.
And so, if I remember correctly from the discussion earlier, if it was for thirty years. To mitigate to, we finally get a contracted area, mitigated area, for thirty years, and it was going to be a million dollars. That million dollars is not paid by the city, it's paid by the developer of how much mitigation they need until. All that property is used up. Is that correct?
Yeah, yes and no. So yes, it does paid for by the developers as they come in. Um, there will probably have to be some seed money, because we can't, we have to get that land secured. Yeah, and then we'll pay ourselves back theoretically with that money as developers build.
Okay, that, that is what I wanted to make sure of, is that, that we aren't buying the land and developers are. Uh, now finally able to start developing and we are, and so taxpayers are at, are supplementing somebody who. Should be paying it in the long run.
Yeah, and initially, there will be some seed money, which we will have to come up with. And there are grants and stuff for that to reach out to. I know Tumwater and us tried to get a grant last year to kind of get some of that seed money. We'll have a better figure of that, but there'll be seed money to get that land initially, but then developers will pay for it, and it'll be self-sufficient. We. They'll pay us back, and then we won't have to pay and do it, but there will be seed money.
And I just wanna make sure. These developers aren't always like the, the big properties, or it could be just be individual property, or trying to build a house, a res- a single residential house.
Well, and I understand that, it's just that, um, you know, it's. I'm making sure that somewhere along the lines, there's, it's not free money just all of a sudden sent out for somebody. For uh mitigated purposes. You know, we, we need to be cautious of that, even though it may be a single homeowner that has to come up with it, their fee isn't as much as. The big one that's putting in a hundred and twenty-five thousand home, or a hundred and twenty homes.
So, sure.
Any other questions? Ashley.
Yes, just cool today. I'm curious, again, what are we, what do you want from council?
So HCP doesn't require anything from you, you guys already approved their contract. I just wanted to come with you with regular updates, because eventually there will be a. We need seed money, here's the money we're gonna need for this, um, that probably won't be for another year. Um, but we'll start, we're starting to research grants now, we're already starting to make those connections now. So that will have better numbers, but I just, I wanna keep you updated in the process as we come along. So that way you're not, you know, you're surprised by anything when we get to the point where you have to approve, hey, we need ten million in seed money, and that's just a number I picked out. We've got this grant for eight million, we got this for, but we need to fund ten percent of it. I don't know what that'll be, but that's just prepping you guys, or we'll be at a point at some time. But we'll have to. Seed this money and get this land, and also the public too, so they know.
So habitat conservation plan is something that is always gonna be in the forefront of developing. And we always need to be aware of what is being required, right?
Unless we start the reproduction of the gophers.
Yeah, unless they're removed from the endangered species list.
So, yeah, yeah, so this is always gonna be a conversation, and whenever there's any talk about development or. This is always gonna be involved.
And I can tell you, the biggest hindrance to development right now, after we've, now we got water rights, is the pocket gopher. So when we have prep people coming out and develop, the one thing that stops them, the only thing that stops them now is I have a pocket gopher in the Yelm, you can't do anything, sorry.
It's not something we wanted to do, but I mean, they're endangered species, so we have to.
Yeah, and that's deemed by US Fish and Wildlife, it's not even our regulation, we submit the reports they do to US Fish and Wildlife, so.
Maybe they'll proliferate, and then they won't be endangered anymore.
So, that would be, that would be an ideal situation, but I hope they do it before we're done their HCP. So that would be, that would be an ideal situation, but I hope they do before we're doing their HCP.
We have no say in this. Thank you for informing us because this is something that needs to be informed. Um, and people don't know about HCP again. What they've, the first thing that they'll do is they'll blame the city for not developing. And so this is a thing that is constantly needs, this is one of those things that not just us, we don't need to, everybody needs to know about this. Um, because the city's getting a lot of blame for a lot of things about not being well.
Do you have a question?
Okay.
I had a client that, that kept asking me, do you know any pest exterminators? Like, why do I call the pest exterminator? And then she was, she was talking about. That's so true. Don't say it on camera, I'm sorry. No. I won't name her. Any other questions on that? All right, Mayor's report.
Um, only thing I want to mention is on October eighteenth, we're gonna have our business roundtable, start doing these quarterly. Um, council's more than welcome to, to attend. Um, going around to businesses and already let the chamber know, um, they sent something out on their newsletter I saw. Um, but yeah, if you're a business owner in Yelm or you're, you know, manage a, a business in Yelm, wanna hear from you. Here, uh, what's going well for you, what's going, if there's something hindering your business or um, some in the city of Yelm, not codes, whether it's sign codes, whether it's permitting, whatever it is, like to hear what you have to say. On October eighteenth, six P M at the Yelm Community Center. Six P M on October eighteenth. Of course, public and generals invited, but this is geared towards business owners management.
Okay, Josh. Initiatives.
So the, on, in regards to YMCA, uh, study that we got, I did not see operating performer in that packet. Was it a separate link or something? Was that like twice?
Yeah, Kyle said it was in there. He says if there's specific questions, you can absolutely point to where it is on it. Um.
I saw a paragraph that said potential revenue, but I did not see no operating performer.
He believes it's part of it, it's included. I'll get the exact.
Have you read, have you read it? Did you read operating performer? Cause I didn't see anything in that.
Usually it's a separate, usually it's a separate formal document. I, I don't know. I scrolled through it. I didn't see it, but I, it's, it's what, a hundred and forty-eight pages for.
He says it's in there. I'm gonna, I'll ask for the exact, he said he provided the exact numbers or the, um, pages that's on it. Council wants to, to know exactly where it's at. I'll take him up on, I'll get it. I am meeting with him, um.
Cause I, yeah, we do it a couple times online. He says any, I'm not seeing it. Am I just blind with pages on me or missing it? I thought, I mean, cause they have our technical data of how they did the phone study, but operating performer is different than uh, a phone study. It's done by a different company. It's not done by same company. Cause it's not feasibility, it's, it's, it should be provided by the YMCA because they have that info, not a uh, feasibility, somebody calling around the citizens in Yelm to see if they want YMCA.
Well, it does.
It's a business document.
It does give, um, projections of what people do say that they would be willing to pay and they do, um, summarize that analysis, new analysis of that. And that's kind of what he was saying is.
Yeah, but that's not operating performer though. That's just a revenue projector.
Thing is, we can go back and forth and ask him, um, but that's what he says it is, so.
Um, that's, that's, yeah, that's not operating performer then. And I don't know how that should be remedied then.
I mean, it was done under reform administration, um, that I, I, I don't know how we would go back if, if council now disagrees with what happened back then. Um, I, I don't know what the process would be, but um, I can definitely have him point out to where he believes it is in it and give that to you.
Cause, um, I'm just wanting to see city pay ten thousand dollars for these two items and I only seen one item. So I think it would be fair that we have both just to be above board and then that points to other things. What else is the city paying for that we're not getting? Do these things that the city pays for, are they getting checked up on that? Again, what we're paying for for these contracts and in other areas as well?
I mean, I can't go down to the past hundred years.
Well, I know, I'm saying this, this is one instance of something that we're dealing with. Okay, well, there are other instances that, you know, is falling through the cracks that, hey, we paid money for this thing.
What, what, what year was that?
Twenty sixteen.
And when?
So again, what's the checks and balances of these things that we're paying for, these contracts that come across? And then again, what we paid for.
Um, I believe the, maybe the auditing would have, I look for Stephanie, um, the auditing process would go through the, um, making sure that normal processes are followed, contracts are followed and all that, um. As far as whether or not something's, I, I guess that would be the administration, um, duty to to ensure this enacted and it's followed through upon.
Concerning to me, um, so that uh, that, that, and then, yeah, I had a talk with a developer who's really interested in buying the six forty acres. So there's a couple people I know that want to buy it, so we could sell it. Um, I asked, um, if he'd be okay with the city keeping land for the road. And he's like, yeah, no problem. He's like, I'll see whatever. And then the master zone complaining, he's like, yeah, sounds great. Love it. But then I told him, no, I was like, you know, go to bed. He's like, yeah, I would expect that. So I think we should get that listed and make millions of dollars in profit for.
As I said, as I said during our retreat, we are going through that process. We'll probably know more here in the upcoming months. You know, this is part of it that HCP um, will be starting to move forward with, probably by the end of the year, we'll, we'll know more, we'll have direction from council on they do want to sell it. It's not just your decision, it's all councils and who we, um, eventually sell it to in the process. RFP of process or however the council decides they want to sell it, if they do want to sell it.
I want some, yeah. Anything else? You're done? Okay, Amanda?
I'm not sure if it's an initiative, but I did read a comment yesterday regarding uh, council previously voting on term limits for elected city officials. And I think that would be a good thing to, um, bring a resolution for, is that the right term Cathy? A resolution for to vote on again to see where the current council stands on that topic.
Okay, um, we could tee that up for a, um, study session in December. And, um, depending on if council, you know, looks like they, they have interest more than just one council member, we'll put it up for a vote on the December. You know, if that's, so if that's what council wants to do. Yep, does that sound good? We'll put up for the study session, discuss it further uh, in December and then move forward with whatever council decides at that point.
Do you have anything else? Sorry. No, okay, Ashley.
Oh gosh, I had two things. I think the first one, I talked to the mayor earlier in the week. And he said, that's a good thing you should bring up as an initiative. Was it the signs?
Signage, yeah.
So, um, talking about comments on social media, when's the bypass gonna be done? You know, we hear that all the time. We tried social media, we tried the city council meetings, we have our own voices. What about a sign? What do you think about putting a sign up there? Sign up there and assign at the other one that says this is what we think is going to happen. For real. And then they can say it or for updates, go here instead of go to Yelm and surrounding areas, you know, the group, um, or City of Yelm free, whatever, whatever, uh.
I think we're, and I had a conversation with Cody about, um, signage. Um, I'm a fan of signs and letting people know what's going on. It's the easiest way, um, if you're driving by saying, you know, we got a lot of people asking about the dog park because it, they, they saw that sign. I'm like, what the heck? Is there a, is there a dog park going on? Similarly, I think we're in the final stretch here for the bypass. Um, the, the end is in sight now. Um, you know, next year it's, it's.
It's been zero days.
That's how much faith we have.
I do believe it will be in before, within two years, we'll have construction supposed to be next year.
Next year is twenty-four. It's also been twenty-four, now it's twenty-five.
No, it's supposed to be twenty-four. It's always been twenty-four.
Well, if we're putting on a sign.
But you can't really put a year because then you'll be out there changing it all the time.
Well, I'm sorry.
I don't think it will. If anything will be moved up, if anything.
But if you put a date of it should, like she suggested, it should be done by this date. Go here for updates. I would leave that. Yeah, right, twenty thirty and then people complain. No, that's, it's not a bad idea.
Yay, it's not a bad idea. Exactly, exactly. Not us. Okay, so that's, uh, the one initiative and then the other one is, uh, everybody's talking about the tax. Right now, the public safety tax and I am looking forward to talking about how we will spend the money, the almost roughly three hundred thousand dollars that we would get as the city from us and what our priorities could be. And then that's really it.
Okay, Brian?
Nothing, but, um, in reference to, uh, Council Crossman, when the question was asked, how do we, when we do these contracts that say certain things, we need to treat all contracts exactly the same, just like public works, I bet. There's somebody in public works that when there's a contract of building a stage, there's somebody going through going, okay, on this date, they said this will be done, we will go check and why is this not done? We paid for, where is it? And that kind of thing. We should probably start doing the same thing with all contracts that we get. Whether it's for a study or something, there, you know, we need to have somebody assigned that's constantly following. Cause I agree with the Crossman, we spent ten thousand dollars and we only got half the product. It's been eight years, give or take, since that, uh, study was done. We can't go back to and say, hey, yo, it's, it's a little late.
I would argue that they're gonna say they did provide.
Well, okay, and if they say they did, and it's one paragraph that says this is the money that's coming, then, okay, and we know that next time when such a thing is put together, we know the backstop to make sure it's not one paragraph saying, yeah, people are going to pay five dollars a, a week for YMCA membership and we expect fifteen thousand people, so we got plenty of maintenance costs that it's, no, we want, when we say this, it is, and have that example of this is what we want. If, if Council Crossman agrees with that, 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 you know, maybe we need to start implementing something like that.
The check and balance. Yeah, I don't disagree with that. No, I do think it's too, too far to go back. I mean, I think, I do think it's, but I didn't see it. I don't know. So I think it would be good to find out.
Actually, it's just one instance. It's just one thing because we're dealing with it, but I'm like, well, how many things have slipped through?
Are there any that you can think of the last year and a half or so?
I don't know. I have been looking. This is one that we're dealing with and looking at this. Okay, it's one thing, but.
That was kind of an unusual study that we requested. We rarely did anything like that.
But this, it shows example one thing. Okay, well, if there's one, there's more than one.
And it hasn't happened just under my administration?
I don't know. We're not checking. That's what I'm saying. Like, how are these things being checked on?
Council member, you get to see all the contracts, you vote on the contracts. Hold me accountable.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's what I'm doing. You brought this contract. But you brought this contract forward. You've been pushing for this. You have been dealing with this going out past. To give the YMCA ten million dollars for feasibility study. You really spearheaded this. This is your spearhead. The YMCA is your baby. Yeah, so as you're saying, you should have been like, hey, are we getting this stuff? This has been your baby, you're in the meetings, none of us, we're not in there, we don't know all this stuff. I'm asking for information because I don't have, know anything about YMCA. I am asking for data, so I'm data driven. I invest my money in businesses. I don't invest in stocks. I invest in businesses. I get operating performer when I invest. You want us to invest tens of millions of dollars of taxpayer money. I want to see what are we investing in? Cause this is how I invest my money. Taxpayer should have the common knowledge of this, oh, it feels good. I'm gonna give them ten million dollars because it feels good. No, you say we have operating, here's our expenditures. Here's our projected revenue, here's our area, and operating form is pages long. I've seen businesses tiny, a fraction of the size have thicker pamphlets of, you know, operating data to go through and this one paragraph is from a phone study is not operating performer by any means.
This is different than what you usually, you actually want to rely, right, return on investment for your, your investment usually, I'm guessing. When you invest, right?
Yeah, you want to see in terms of, is this?
This, hold on, this isn't dissimilar though. We aren't a business. We aren't operating in the YMCA. The YMCA is the one operating for their profit or loss. When, when we don't necessarily care if they're, I mean, we want them to be successful and all that for longevity of the program. But other than that, we're not looking at their day-to-day operations. We're not seeing if they're profitable or not. That was for them to see if they can open up a shop and be profitable and sustain it. We're built, we're helping with the project to get them in, to get the YMCA in, to get the building in, to get the pool in. That's what we're really concerned about. I understand that, you know, you want to make sure that they're making a profit and they're healthy and all that. But that's not the biggest part of it. The biggest part is getting the building there and getting the structure. That's where the, um, that's where the feasibility portion comes in. The operating like you're asking for, it's more on them. That's what they're concerned about. I.
Then why are we giving them what seventeen million, whatever that number is?
The, the ten thousand dollars for a feasibility.
So the, the, the investment you want to make with them, the millions of dollars to build a building. Is that gonna be a city building? Is that gonna be a YMCA building? Who owns the building?
Those are questions that we still haven't had answered yet. That's what we're discussing. That's what council's gonna determine if they want an entire building for them that, um, the city of Yelm owns and then we can operate, we can lease out to the Y, we can lease out to whatever. Do you want us to be part of the, um, capital, capital, um, fundraising and help them get that money so they can create the YMCA, create the pool and all that? We could absolutely just create a, a swimming pool. We could invest money into that and we could do the study, see how much it is that we'd make in, um, you know, in every year and all that. And, and revenue and how much loss we would make and all that stuff, but it's that's not what we're in the business, so. I, I don't know.
And I agree with you because it's expensive, but we want an entity to do it.
But then what is the purpose of the, why do you want to know their operating costs and all that?
Well, one, because it was in the contract.
I, I think that's the biggest piece of it. I think he's looking at the, a- and I'm just trying to simplify it. I think the fact that for the ten thousand dollars or whatever it was, if I wasn't here, you weren't here, I mean, I get all that. It says for this amount of money, we will provide A, B, C, D, E, F, G, whatever.
I know, but his reasoning was for more for, he wants to know as an investment. He wasn't, he didn't care about the contract is what he was stating.
No, I don't care about the contracts because if it wasn't in there, I wouldn't be pushing hardcore. I'm saying we paid for this, we bought this. And we didn't get what we bought, paid for. That's what kind of bugs me the most is that we paid for this thing and taxpayers didn't get what they paid for. That's what bugs me the most about it. The investor, I'm a data guy. I lo- I love information. So I make, because like I said, I don't know, I'm on a fence about YMCA. What are you planning to do and everything? I know you say so a lot of it up in the air, where I like to have data, like, okay, so make a decision and running by other people, you know, what is our investment to, you know, to the city, okay? Like I said, are we owning a building? Well, are they gonna be able to pay for that building? You know, or is it going to come back to taxpayers like, oh, well, they can afford it and now it's taxpayer funded building and was that look like, you know, there's a long, there's just tons of questions and things. So I'm just looking for more data, but the thing that gets me the most is that this can't work paper and like Brian said. You know, how were these checked lines for everything else? Cause then that opens my eyes to like, well, if this got missed, I assume there's checks and balances for everything. You know, that's probably my fault making an assumption until you see there's an issue. Okay, there's one issue, well, that might, there might be more. Maybe there's not. I hope there's not. Uh, I really hope not, uh, but taxpayers again, what they paid for.
And I think in the, if I recall, when they listed it, they listed it separate. It's like you're gonna get this, this and this. I'm trying to remember. And I think normally it's a separate formal document. I think that is u- usually it is. It's not always, or.
I didn't see it spelled out. It said, I thought it said feasibility and that whatever.
Yeah, so yeah, line A feasibility study, line B operating performer.
Yeah.
Kyle explained the details combined in that document. Hey, I don't know if, if you want our, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna have our attorney, you know, try to do any legal action or anything like that.
No, I mean, to be honest, I think it's too old to even. But I get it. I, I understand where he's coming from. I understand where you're coming from personally. I understand, but but I don't know. We done with that? Are we done with that?
Yeah, no, I was just, yeah, I was just hearing Brian.
That was Brian. Brian, do you have anything else? I apologize. Okay.
Yeah, no, um. I, I don't have any initiatives. I just really enjoy learning how everything works. There's a lot of moving parts. Even with Todd's presentation on the, uh, the event rental fee discussion, there was a lot we had to discuss there, so it's really good. And I'm, I'm just really concerned about how the pocket gopher is gonna find its way into the mitigated land.
Anything else?
Signs. And trails.
Just wanted to mention that I don't see any movement on the fence at the old city hall. They're being very slow. Thank you. And, uh, just a few, future warning for the future, I noticed that Miss Amanda, who was not here six months ago. Has a UFO on her arm.
I noticed that too, but I wasn't gonna say it in front of everybody in line.
Where were you when I needed you?
Yeah.
But that may come up again.
In regards to UFO?
Give an update. I brought up in the last study session about the local, the Prairie Hot Rod Association and, you know, the city and blah, blah, blah. So I went to their board meeting and it was interesting. They are a long time Yelm club. And apparently what happened was, and I don't have all the history, but that. I think they used to hold their annual show. What they do is they have this big show and they collect money, and then they give the money back to the community. That's their, to different organizations. And I guess years past decades, they used to hold it, I think, at Yelm City Park. I could be wrong, okay? And then, of course, you know, everything got, so the only place that they could hold it was, uh. Or should I say the wrong place, but Wackelski Park and Rainier, because it's big and it's open and all this. So at their board meeting, they were talking about, I was getting some history where they've. They want to be a, they wanna still be known as a Yelm club. They said that, um. You know, Rainier, they were able to rent Wackelski Park, but like, I was also there when they were doing the voting on where they're giving out their money, and a lot of it is now. And they have for the past few years given it to different organizations, but like the Rainier Senior Center and the Rainier Food Bank. Because Rainier's letting them, I mean, they're paying for the park. So all that to say, they did get a venue for this year. So they told me that, you know, they're good this year, the, they're gonna use actually the Methodist Church. Because they have that big, huge lawn and they can do two, I think, over two hundred cars or something back there. So they're gonna, one of their members goes there. So that is kind of out of the, that's not a big deal anymore, but they were, they just were kind of, one of them said, well, what's the city gonna do for us? I'm like, well, I mean, we're not have to do anything for them, but I just think that if, if something comes up where like. I don't know, there's an event or the parade where the city needs a car for something. If they were to be reached out to, I do think it would mean a lot to them. Like if you said. Say you were gonna be grand marshal and you said, I want an old blah, blah, blah. They have some beautiful cars. I'm just saying, I think it would mean a lot to them because they really want to be, um. Because they are a Yelm, so they meet in Yelm, they, they have their board meetings here and everything else, so that was it.
Would they do a truck?
Oh, oh, I doubt, I wouldn't do that with my car. No, I, 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 I don't know. I, I'm not gonna say no because I don't, there, I think there's people that obviously have project cars that probably would be. Open to that, but I'm not gonna speak for that.
Cuz I'm, you get to touch it?
You don't get that thick.
But, but yeah, just something to keep in mind. There, there, a lot of them are quite a bit older. And they're very proud of their cars. It's just, it was fun. It was a good board. They don't really need any, what.
Not to put on their show, like.
So they, they would need.
Why they going to Rainier, like?
Big location.
Yeah, okay. It's a big location.
Okay, so about two hundred cars. So when you look at renting the school, because I looked at this for our own club. When you rent like the school, you pay for not only to rent the parking lot at the school, but you also have to pay for, uh, staff to be there for the bathroom system. And it adds up. And their goal is not really to make money for them. Their goal is to, you know, they're giving these nice little sums of money to different. Organizations, so they're really, I don't know if there is a place in Yelm, to be honest, that's.
Does it have to be paved?
No, as long as it's not, like Wackelski Park isn't paved. Um, and Jesse's doing the, you know, the, the big thing by the movie theater, he's doing the trucker treat. And a lot of the people are gonna be flowing out into the field there. So, but it's just, it's a thought for the future. This next year, they've already got it, their date and they're set for this year. But I do think it would mean a lot to them, just like I said, just. If, if you ever needed a car for something. You know?
Some day cruise.
Like the homecoming, they, they always reach out to them to drive them around the, you know, the princes, princes, princesses, whatever they are, yeah.
But don't touch it.
Are you still doing the Experience Olympia takeover? That sounds like a great opportunity. You know, probably want to build cars.
Or like the Christmas parade, you know, the, the lighted parade, obviously, I mean, you know, just, I don't know, just. Well, I don't know if they're gonna.
And real quick, um, I've been hearing reports of council members more than four meeting after hours, um, together in. Different locations. I do just wanna remind council that if there's four of you that has a quorum, and you're not allowed to talk about city business or anything according to the Open Meetings Act. Um, all business, it has to be, if there's four members, just don't, don't meet up if there's four. Otherwise, we have to publicly announce it, right, Kathy? Um, so, don't talk, um, city business and try not to meet up with four more. County commissioners, they can't do that right now. You know, they can't meet with a single person, um, another commissioner by themselves. And they've had, you know, people, they've been targeted by, um, legal action, all that in the past, for, for doing that, advise. So, um, just make sure.
I mean, so all the committees, meetings, are they all public, open, public meetings that we?
Four, at those, there's never a majority of council members at those. But they are open to the public, so let's go to it.
No, I'm saying, can I go to another committee meeting?
You can, yeah.
As this, uh, sound observer.
Yeah.
But then that's a.
But it, we, we.
But there's four, it's kind of.
We, um, publicly record those, or we publicly, um, announce those, don't wait the.
We do, we put those on our monthly meeting schedule.
We are good with those.
Notice that city hall and also put that on our website every month for those.
There's some of them I wanted to go to, and I didn't thought we could, so.
Anything else? Ben?